I'd like to call this meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Innovation Committee for at 7:10 PM, U.S. University. Pursuant to all the reading law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or make a transcript of the meeting. Any of you that are there for a guide before use of transmissions may be made with a procedure underlined by the present meeting and now municipal. Leading with the role power of members present for the legal committee is Andrew.
Present.
Mr. Daniel Harvey.
Present.
Mr. Gah.
Here.
Mr. Shado.
Present.
Mr. Here.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Present.
And I would transmit the questions. House of Representatives, we have the law enforcement director, Mr. Pascal, and I will present the round of questions. After all, let me start with the question.
I look to the United States and America, and to the Republic which stands for the nation, for God, in the middle of liberty and justice.
The next regular meeting is Tuesday, February 15, 2022, 6:00 PM, here in Somerset Berkeley. This is first time we have up here on this, in my name is Project Lead the Way, Pascal.
So I think we have some guests who are going to talk a little bit about our project Lead the Way biomedical program and also our computer science program. And I'm going to let them just take it away.
Okay.
So I'll start with the biomedical program, Matt Talbot. As you guys now get to see what's going on. So two years ago, we started the biomedical innovation pathway. And with that, one of the challenging forces that we wanted to break in as part of that was to complement that program is Project Lead the Way classes. So to go along with the biomedical pathway, and in the folder I provided for you guys, I show on the first page kind of like what we get to incoming freshmen or current students that might be interested in it, some updates, information that seems to go on, as well as how the classes tour. It's not that whole, you know, stage on the stage, it's more of a got it and assigned kind of thing. So it's a lot of questioning, a lot of kind of, you know, direct the students in ways that they're solving their own problems. A couple of years ago, one of the things that Mr. Pierce had presented was to talk about, you know, using a 3D printer for process and everything that he was doing. And, you know, it was one of those questions like, you know, why don't we do that here? And this is what this biomedical pathway is all about, is doing, you know, some very much hands-on activities and bringing in different scopes of health service jobs that Gavin will kind of touch on. Currently, we offer two of the classes, and the next year we'll be bringing in the third class. The third class, after that, you have the option of bringing in the fourth class to kind of help with those. Myself and Sashel, Dr. Roush, wrote a grant last year. We got $50,000 for, to help us start with the program for sustainability and training of teachers outside of myself to take the class and then further classes. So, you know, we're up to date with what we have to offer. In this folder, you're going to see, like I said, the biomedical pathway information. The, I gave another letter, and the student said that username, the situation, she wanted to be here, she was very much excited by Gavin's. But unfortunately, you know, COVID hits, COVID hits, so. I was reconsidering. The next one is, you know, promotional tools that we use for kids to kind of get them thinking about the program and what we have to offer. And the last thing we have there is called BASE, the Biotechnology Assistant Credential Exam. And this is one of those things that, you know, as we keep growing our program, we'd like to see our kids, or our students, I should say, kind of leave Somerset Berkeley with, with the idea that they can be, get credentials for, you know, going in and entry level biotech pathways, or maybe complement it at, you know, versus a community college or go on to, you know, other community colleges or four-year institutions. But the beauty of this program is it's opened up to students of all levels, all skills. So anyone can walk into the program, you know, whether you're an honor student, an K student, college prep student, a dance college prep. It's open to everyone because, you know, different aspects of the jobs require different levels, different skills, and so this is what we're going for. So ultimately, besides that internship kind of program that we're going to bring in, this credential program would be something that we're going to inform through. In addition to that, we're working on bringing in the student group, CULSA. CULSA is kind of to the health sciences and the health services that we've covered in our biomedical pathway. It's a competition group, kind of like Huguette is for business. So we're working on getting a charter for Somerset Berkeley with that. So I'm going to hand it over to Gavin to talk about, since he's a student perspective, and his willingness to answer any questions you have, or, you know, kind of share his experience. He's in the second year of the program. Unfortunately, we got the program too late. He would have been one of those students that would probably taken it three or four years, but I will hand it over to Gavin.
I'd like to thank everybody for letting me do this. My name is Gavin Burgess, I'm a senior for the class of 2022. And as Mr. Talbot said, I'm a two-year student within this pathway. I really believe it creates this very effective and connecting conjunction class pathway with core science classes, communicating and putting a hands-on type of learning within this field. And I mean, a couple of examples from last year, this year, last year, for physical biomedical science, we did a case study, a fictional case study with this person, this victim, Anna Garcia, which we studied. We did the evidence, we did forensics, we mixed it with our knowledge and learning about genetics and how to break down a crime scene, and we mixed that with what we were learning in the science court classes and all of our knowledge outside of school, which was really interesting to put hands-on, given we were hybrid and at home. And this year, with the human body systems, which works pretty much in conjunction with anatomy and physiology, it works with putting a hands-on, for this class, a mannequin sculpture of creating these different types of clay modeling of the organs, the muscles, the bones and areas of the bodies and the cavities and all that stuff, which gives us a nice perspective and a nice hands-on learning to, it's worth of conjunction, and it's pretty good for just the core classes, helping with credits to get into good and competitive programs with colleges and to use those credits to our ability and use that opportunity given to us, to lead the program.
And then do you want to share with what you're going to go on to?
So I was looking on to, as I'm interested into sciences and biotechnology, I'm looking to go undergrad into biology and biotechnology and microbiology. And with these credits, this would allow me to create this competitive advantage within these colleges, which would give me further into the program, give me further into these classes, which would evidently give me a good advantage for these things.
So one of the things that Gavin mentioned is project Lead the Way, some colleges and universities will give transcriptable college credit for students that either took the class or each one of our classes, we have a class exam that they have to pass. We also have to do that for our grant funding, make sure that our grants still pay out. So, and then in addition to that, and again, I apologize to my other students, I wouldn't be here, one of them, the student rep couldn't be here tonight. But the last thing that I'll share with you is, you know, reach it out to the community with climate care, we're going to be taking about 75 kids to the climate care learning institute. We get a grant for transportation for that through the education fund, and we'll be bringing them, and they'll be able to see like hands-on, like, you know, the tools, the rooms, you know, like really get kind of immersed in, you know, what possible careers or skills that they're learning about today that they can apply to harm. So just to keep it brief, I'll just turn it over to Ms. Ashley.
So I'm Jennifer Ashley. I am the department head for art technology and design. And unfortunately, my project Lead the Way teacher couldn't be here this evening. Our teacher is Dr. Burke, he's pretty new to the district, this is his third year, and he has jumped into Project Lead the Way, we'll be, assure you, he's very excited about these classes. He actually works in collaboration with Mr. Talbot, and, you know, and they talk about the implementation of these programs, because they are different than traditional stage-on-the-stage classrooms. Students are active, truly active participants in their learning. One of the main focuses in our computer science programs is, you know, to get students to realize that computer science can be used for good, because we see a lot of ways that computer science is used to make money, or, you know, for things that are not so great. But we want to make sure that students can see that there are ways to use computer science to solve real-world problems that help people. So, you know, that doesn't just happen overnight, that takes a lot of different exercise activities and, you know, trying to bring the kids to the outside world and the outside world into the classroom as well. So right now, you know, we're definitely in the infancy of our program as well, we do the computer science pathway. This is our second year with Project Lead the Way classes, but, you know, I don't have to tell you what last year looked like. It was, it was very challenging to do something that's hands-on and collaborative, you really need all the kids in the classroom. So this year, I would say our goal has been tremendously successful. We have two classes that are currently running. One of them is called Computer Science Essentials, and it's an introductory level class that can give students, you know, a broad exposure to different types of programming on different platforms. And that's supposed to give them the foundation that they need to continue into the pathway, into the more advanced classes. Students in that course begin the year with doing block-based programming, which, you know, you have elementary kids doing block-based programming, middle school kids, you may get to high school, they need to transition into the language-based programming. There's lots of different languages for programming. Something that we like to start with is Python. It just, it's something that the kids can easily transition to from the block-based. And the applications that we have through Project Lead the Way, specifically the VEX robotics program, is an excellent tool to transition, because they allow the student to go from the blocks view to the Python view and go back and forth as they need to. So, and that actually connects to our enhancement of our robotics program. We just actually received, and I don't know if it's been talked about at school committee, it's a big announcement, it's all you. Okay, Garrett, it's, it was announced on Twitter, so you're going to have to start following me for the up-to-date information. So we received an almost $16,000 grant from the Greater Fall River Development Corporation for VEX robotics kits for our introductory robotics program, as well as programmable drones. So I was jumping for joy, I kid you not, when I received the phone calls from Ms. Haskell about this as this unfolded. So we're really excited about that, because now our foundational Project Lead the Way course can get students excited about robotics, and then they have an opportunity to move into a class that just focuses on those VEX robotics skills and tools specifically. Something else that we're running this year is our cybersecurity class, which has been a hit. The students are so excited to go to that class. Every time we have the rated block, guess where they want to go? They want to go with Dr. Burke, and they want to basically have another cybersecurity class. This is something that, you know, these students in high school taking a cybersecurity class, that didn't exist when any of us were in high school. They, these students know more than we do, and they know it too. And it's, it's really exciting, because let's talk about a real-world problem that needs to be solved. And let's talk about something that, again, students can earn micro credentials even in high school. They can earn college credits, go into a program for cybersecurity, and they will have any job they want when they get out, because everyone needs support in terms of cybersecurity and making sure that their business or that whatever, whatever it is, government operation, everybody's going to make sure that they are as secure as possible. Practically the way provides students with a portal where they log in and they actually practice hacking safely in that portal. I mean, it's like, I don't, it's, it's amazing. And the students are so excited, I know that you've had a crime scene, we had a cybersecurity crime scene, because we saw what Mr. Talbot did, we're like, okay, well, we can do that too. It's, it's just, we're doing it, our students are doing awesome things, they're excited. The way we have it set up right now, we didn't think we were going to run cybersecurity every year, but then, after we launched it this year, I was like, we have to offer this every single year. This is going to be one of our most popular classes, I can see it. In addition to those two classes, we also have Computer Science Principles, which was not a program that we have a staff to run this year, but we're planning to run that course next year, and hopefully we'll be able to run cybersecurity if the student interest is good as well. And we're still taking advantage of our Project Lead the Way grant for computer science, so we had received that last year, and, and so we are continuing that, continuing with professional learning for, not just Dr. Burke, but also, again, building that passing in the department, so that we have, the more people we have to teach the course, the more likely we are to have somebody who's available during that time slot when it goes through Aspen. And we've planned the same for the biomedical pathway. So these are really great opportunities for students, and again, as part of our innovation pathway, these are high-value careers, and in the South Coast specifically, it's why we chose them. And so students would start their, some of their career here, and then be able to continue that, and then come back home and contribute to our community in, in some different ways as professionals. And so we are, and we've got grant writers here, and we've got students who are really excited, and kids go with their feet. So we are really looking forward to our increased enrollment. I, I don't want to embarrass you, but Mr. Talbot has worked really hard, not just solo, but with his entire team. They have more than doubled their enrollment in a year. And our computer science team is well on their way, work is out quick. And again, we're trying to make some of those decisions, even with scheduling, as we are, we are on the horizon of scheduling for next school year. We want to make sure that kids have those opportunities to sign up for the courses and to be able to run them, even though we didn't anticipate, you know, we're, we're looking at how, how do we balance the number of teachers that we have with the number of courses that we want to run, again, to meet those needs of kids, but we want them to have what they like. And so these are, this is a really great success, and we'd like to continue it and expand. And then with our capstone coordinator that we have hired, who's also a librarian here, that is a recent position that's been filled, that we have already started some of those conversations about how do we take our capstone to the next level as seniors and expand it outside of our English department, so that students, as Mr. Talbot mentioned, you know, there, there will be some opportunities for students, part of their captain to be working in biomedical and computer science, in addition to the other fabulous courses that we have offered. We have a really wide variety, so we're really excited.
And so question, how are instructors selected to teach these courses? Do they go through specific training or just go?
So when we first brought it in, we had teams, before we brought in either one of the innovation pathways, we had groups of people, we put out requests school-wide to see who was interested. But then when it came to content-specific classes, you know, the department was kind of surveying, you know, who would be interested in doing this. So we have three people in my department, two of which are trained in the classes, and then as we get more, or, you know, we need to staff in more, we'll be trained. It's a two-week program for some of the classes with continuation throughout the year, and then one of our classes, it's a four-week program. So even though I'm a bio teacher with some backgrounds, like, don't know everything, so, you know, you can get trained in a lot of things, and then opportunities to actually go off into the field and kind of, you know, get a taste of, all right, what is this, so I can bring it back to the class, or, you know, so I'm a local expert, that kind of thing.
And I think the way that, and I can't speak to the biomedical training, but Project Lead the Way's computer science training is very much set up so that somebody who is an educator can come in and not specifically have a background in that field, but after going through the training, they have the background they need to teach that course successfully. It's very difficult to find somebody with a background in computer science who wants to come into education. I'm fortunate that I do have Dr. Burke, who does have the computer science background, but I have another new teacher who just joined Somerset Berkeley, and she doesn't have a background in computer science, she has a background in education, instructional technology. She's got the skill set, all she needs is the training, and then, you know, we'll have two excellent teachers who can teach these courses. Which also enhances all of our other courses in addition. I mean, they, they are all connected. It's, we're really, really excited and really happy. Again, through COVID, we have not only gotten this off the ground, but really grown the programming and things like that.
Could I, could I just say, you're saying that this is exciting. I agree with a lot of you, this is extremely exciting, because the area of bio med is presented such a great career opportunity, particularly in Massachusetts, which is kind of a hub of biotechnology and science. And so just reading in Boston Globe, all of the real estate expansion in Boston is focused on bio med technology companies, you really know it from office space, and it's a laboratory space even in downtown Boston. So it's a fantastic career opportunity for us students, and it's great that we have this program and it's been so well-received. And with respect to the computer science and coding, I was advocating for years about coding courses at high school, and so I'm really, really pleased to see that that's part of the pathways program and that it's, that it's been so well-received among our students. I, one of our students of the month this year is recommended by Dr. Burke in the area of cybersecurity and computer science. And in addition to the accolades for a particular student who was acknowledged at our meeting here tonight, there's a tremendous amount of information about this program, and in fact, about the cybersecurity class, because this student kind of is excelling in that, in that particular class. And there's a component in it about ethics, and that's something very important that our students be introduced to. So this is, this is great, and I'm really pleased to hear about both programs and how well it's been received by our students.
Thank you. Congratulations. Super happy to be here.
It really is. I'm sure Ms. Ashley's teaching is definitely the same, where during parent teacher conferences and even the open house that we hosted, hearing some of the other kids that were looking at private schools and decided, you know, with some of the programs that were offered, like, you know, one of the mothers during parent teacher conferences, she was, we talked the whole time about the program, and her son was a freshman, a student, excellent in the class, and she was just excited, she's like, hey, when I go in there, we're going to Somerset Berkeley, and it's like, yeah, we can offer this, this experience, and we definitely, you know, keep up the momentum, and, you know, settle off in the front seat and, you know.
And I think it's fantastic that you're reaching outside of the primary school and that, outside experience, I think that's phenomenal, that these, these can really be a lot. I just, two questions. So, have you, and I know that you had to start it during some difficult times, but have you, do you have any indication of if you don't, it's early on, of kind of the breadth of the students, the kind of achievement levels of the students in the past entering these programs? Because you mentioned, Mr. Talbot, that anybody who can jump into this, they're even more excited. If we're going to track the success rate of students who are typically at different levels, I think that would be, because we don't want to create these programs, obviously, just for the higher achievement, we want to have these pathways for anybody. So I don't know if you've seen that experience, or if you're looking to track it in the future, because it's early on.
So the first two years we offered, the students got the same weighted points as the other people asked. And, you know, some of the students asked about that, and like, what does that mean? And we simply could be like, oh, I'm not a new student, just like, well, you might even stay inside here, I'm going to, you know, still going to be able to do it. I don't have data, because this is our second year, we weren't able to do the ELC last year because of COVID situations. But it's interesting to see the quality of the work coming from all the students, that, you know, sometimes you can see the breadth is a little different, but it's their understanding. And I find it fascinating to see the skill levels that, I have a very high-achieving student in one of my classes, and you put that person next to somebody that they've never have a class together, and, you know, the skills that are there, they're on par with each other. And it's like, so it's not always about books, marks, it's about, hey, can I manipulate this micro pipette? It's interesting, he, he sat for it two years in a row, hey, this is a micro pipette, let me give you the price of it first. And then the kids are like, they'll be like, oh, how much does this cost? Why would I ask that? This is going to take this with its bag, you know? But, you know, like, depending skills, it's interesting, we do a pipetting by numbers before we do gels and stuff, and it's kind of like the old watercolors that you want to keep in the lines, and, you know, you have some kids that, they were terrified of taking the class, and they like outshine their, you know, other students in the pairs and stuff. So it's very like, it, it's a nice, I don't know, welcoming, welcoming environment, I guess, like, you know, nobody, you're all the same kind of thing, and it's very homogenous.
I, I think, I think that, I would imagine that hands-on learning is something that some students really do, that's, that's the kind of learning that they really embrace. So I think that's a great.
And I remember last year, students, they said we could bring back labs, like, you know, the partition went off, there's a PPE, you know, like, we're going to get started, you know? And even this year, we hit the ground running with labs right away, and, you know, it's funny because some of the, so we ran two principles of biomedical science last year. And when we started with the crime scene this year, and like, kids talking, you know, like, both there during the class, like, that's not good, you need to do that for our, my, 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 but it's funny because a lot of the kids that are in the second year that, you know, were, you know, either with Gavin or in my other class, you know, just talking about, like, they're looking forward to the third class, you know? So it's, it's kind of exciting.
We've made a concerted effort to be inclusive, and that was, if you recall, when we were applying for the innovation pathway designation, is this, this, these courses are designed to include everybody. And again, we have teachers who are not only committing themselves to weeks in the summer, the, the research that they're doing and the prep that they're doing outside of that is significant. And they're excited, they're inspired, and they're coming back to the classroom and inspiring our students. And we want all kids to, to have that experience, and, I mean, that is, are connected with our vision of the graduate, right? We want kids to find their bliss, what's their caution, or, it may even be, ooh, that's not for me, right? It was a great class, I really, I loved the class, I'm going to do that for the rest of my life. And wow, wouldn't it be nice? I mean, if, I know some of the courses that I took that I couldn't take until I got to college, and I was like, woo, I thought I wanted to do that forever, and it turns out this is my bliss, right? And luckily, I found it, but isn't it nice that we could cultivate that or help kids eliminate something, maybe from their list? And we were, again, really intentional about the onboarding and the offboarding, right? So there is an on-ramp, but if it turns out this is not for them, then they can get to go back and, you know, make a switch and do something else, but still be challenged and still, again, find what it is they, they love. So.
Is there a third innovation pathway?
We're hoping to expand moving forward, yes.
Not to put more pressure on them.
No, no, not, no, no, no. I thought there was nothing.
No, it's already.
And we're going to, like, we, again, it's like to move forward, and, and we are constantly talking about, it, it's really part of the. It's really part of the conversation. And it's not just for these teams, right? Outside, it's, there's talk and it's like, well, you know, this might be a good option for an innovation pathway or for a pathway for us. And, you know, there's a lot of overlap, not just with, you know, it's the medical and it's the biotech and it's the computer science, which has the technology connection. There's, there's a lot of overlap. And both Ms. Ashley and Mr. Talbot have also worked to connect with some of our younger students. And actually, Nicole Mello, who is the coordinator, the content coordinator at Somerset Middle School, she works with the technology team and the science team. And so, some of these conversations are ongoing. And we want students who are making decisions about where they're going to go after middle school. We want them to choose us and, and we are, you know, we're definitely worth it and have a lot to offer. So, and we'll continue to do that and expand, so.
Well, I just want to thank you so much, Neve, for us. And I may, others may hear, we say this on occasion, but for us, a lot of times, we're doing our thing here and worried about policies and budgets and this and that. So, it's great to have students actually come into the room and talk about the programs and the excitement and progression. So, thank you very much for all your being here, Ms. Ashley, Gavin, and Mr. Talbot. And it's great, it's great to be here today. Keep us informed, keep the good news coming.
Thank you all for your ongoing support.
And if you need support for, because I noticed not only Mr. Talbot referred to a blog forum in the microbiology section. Dr. Burke mentions this is also an interest in the coding blog. There are issues with funding, I should let us know that because I think those are two blogs that I will wholeheartedly support, even though we're struggling to make ends meet right now. There are always, always sources of revenue that in pretty frequently important areas.
Great, thank you.
And a good segue is next up on the news is recognizing Talbot for his science teacher of the year. Now, my notes say 2020, is it 2020?
Technically, I was in for 2020, but because of COVID, they extended it to...
Ah, so now you've got two years. And for all, any of you that don't know, I just, a little bit of the Massachusetts Association of Science Teachers ask, is a professional organization that is including scientific education at all levels. And there's a state chapter. And Mr. Talbot is actually, if this is correct, you are a, you're a member of the group, right?
Yes, well, I'm a member and then I represent a subcommittee.
For the county board. Directed in my department. Yeah, so anyway, but in recognition of your recognition, a citation here, I'd like to read into the minutes and then the committee will hopefully endorse it. On January 20, 2020, we gave Somerset Berkeley regional school committee a citation prepared, signed by numbers, will be pending and voted and strived with affirmative records. Citation, whereas Matthew K. Talbot was named 2020 Bristol Aggie of Science Teacher of the Year and by Massachusetts Association of Science Teachers. And whereas he was awarded his distinguished honor by actively promoting and advancing the quality of science education for students in Somerset High School. And whereas he is an esteemed member of the high school science department since 2001, serving as content coordinator since 2010, sharing his passion for science with students and members of the department. And we have heard about you, so our members in Somerset School, Future School Committee recognized Matthew K. Talbot's outstanding achievement and extended appreciation for his dedication and commitment to the students of Somerset Berkeley. And it's signed by the numbers and we provide it to you at a, at a later date. But it's kind of, it's a good segue to, you know, what, the excitement you bring in the people back around. So, thank you very much.
Do you have to make a motion? I'll make a motion to vote for that.
Second.
I just have one thing, you know, I'm just gonna refer back to a couple of things. I've, I've had the pleasure to know Mr. Talbot now since 2006. And one of the things that we see these programs and things like that, and I'm just gonna refer to two items that were mentioned in here. One, Liz mentioned about our staff going to these trainings. Now, every single summer, either during negotiations or whatever the case may be, I tend to reach out to Mr. Talbot and he's always like, well, I have a training this day, I have a training this day. Or I'm, I'm not gonna be able to, I'm not gonna be able to do it, you know? So, it's just one of those things. Oh, excuse, that's what it is. I'm not gonna hold it for you. But it's really, it's just great to see this. But one of the other things that I received and I'm just gonna refer to what Julie just said was, one day I got an email from Jeff saying that Mr. Talbot's gonna reach out to you regarding PC Institute, regarding our students. And I said, why didn't he reach out? Well, he was kind of, you know, because I'm on the board. But, so, again, a day off, he comes to my office. We get to, we were there for about two hours. And I introduced him to many folks, to our PT department, to our chief of medical officer and all that. And then I followed up with them to see exactly what kind of program we can put under his vision for these students. And both members that I, they were like, we were very pleased with Matt because they remembered his first name because he was open to any ideas and he was there for the right reasons. So, I, I didn't mention that to you because I knew we were gonna have you here today, but I, that was just someone looking out because we have so many groups coming in. And it's always, this is what we want to do, this is what we want to do. But he was really open minded. And I think that's what makes you a great leader in your department and, and you're an asset to our school department. So, I just wanted to share that with you today, so. Different discussion.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks, Gavin.
Good to see you guys.
Thank you for coming.
Okay. Next up, we have November leader, major of the month. Oh, yes, you represented the state of the best, you're kind of over the next nineteen. November leader, conditions of the month. Les Barrera, independent, Maggie Price, and David Redd. Building contact digital system, Aiden Mont, academic. Nicholas Hurry, Brazilian. Nicholas Rice, Greek. Respectful. Maya Rust, empathetic. Andy R. Tandoz, empathetic. And David Sores, digital system. Congratulations to our innovative students. Business and financial. First up is a budget update on the subcommittee. Want to, want to comment? Okay. Budgets up here. Sit us up to our chair.
I'm gonna go on here, you.
Well, budget, subcommittee, we're working our way out. We've got a little, a little more work to do. We're, you know, given, all the great things we're doing in our school and all the social, we're gonna have to drill down a little deeper. But we kind of, I think we're in a lot better shape than we were last year on timing, our positioning on the dollar and all. You know, we've got to work on, but we've got to plan over the next few weeks to take it along. Pretty much with that. Some of the expressions. Yeah, okay, good. And December financial statements, I think we have in our packet. Things that, you know, about Mr. Tara Gommer, which we can talk about, or we can talk about the question. I think we could say though, that Mr. Tara was pretty much reassured us that we're on a good trajectory, trajectory here, we're not, doesn't anticipate any kind of issues which satisfy, which would bottom on for the budget. I think this year, budget is really clear. All right. Enrollment projection, what do you think? The variables in our packet, there's no, there's shadow here. The only follow-up I, I was asked that I did not see in that was looking at the public, is any public shift to the reference Somerset and what's going forward? Is that kind of a yes and it's enrollment all the time? But in court, Tyler's also gonna be with the break down. That's it on that. One of the things, I, I think, the projections that we see look positive going forward for, for some time. The issues that concern me and in conversations with the superintendent, and I don't want to speak to him, but I, I would, might have had pretty clear discussion. The concerns are that many of the education of the secondary schools in the area are in expansion mode. Bristol Aggies has completed a significant expansion of the physical plant. Diamond is on the cusp of expanding their program and looking to expand their enrollment by 50%. Bristol Plymouth, who is talking about this at our budget, maybe is, is proposing a $350 million expansion of Bristol Plymouth, which is gonna come before the goalies in the communities in that location of school district very shortly. We've got charter schools, there's a proposal that has strong business backing to create a second charter school to service the greater forward where you get through areas. So, while the demographics look okay, the competition for students is, is growing. That concerns me a great deal because I, I believe, and I've said this as long as I've served on this committee, that we really need a core student body of about 1,000 students in order to be able to continue with the broad range of programs that we have that can service our high achieving students, our students kind of in the middle and our undergraduate achieving and special needs students. So, it, it is a challenge coming up, even though the demographic numbers of births seem to be relatively low.
I think if you, you know, Mr. Paris, to speak to what you're saying, that they look okay, but if you look 10 years out, you know, we are decreasing. And that's just for the, we look at that in higher ed too, and you're seeing, so how do we come into the future, right? Never mind looking at them, the higher ed is probably with a lower enrollment. And I know you're seeing about 1,000, but 10 years out, it will be less than 100. And you're right, the competition is concerning too because we have less students and more competition, right? We're gonna have to go elsewhere. But they're pretty secure in these programs and everything else that we have. But you spoke about something that we need to keep thinking about. Because 2031 will be there before you know it.
We have to, we have, I, I don't think people have thought of public education as a competitive environment. And maybe in some of the large gateway cities, the issues are out of, out of their service of growing student body, but for suburban communities like ours, it's going to be a challenge.
I think the programs that you're building should be meaningful for us to consider coming through. We just have to continue to try to do that, to build upon what we've got to buy and create improvements. Make us more. I think too, down the road, we look at ways to collaborate with, where possible, with local students, because they're not here yet. I, I went in Super Junior School and told many years ago, we should have to diamond and trying to figure out how, where they may be students that we have that were interested in vocational training, but stayed here, how could they access that out of school, still remaining our students? And I think Jesse's looking at these opportunities for collaboration while we're open. So, you guys were already ahead of her? Yeah. Super Junior School, right? We need to, the school committee to be open to like thinking outside the box. So, we need to, we need to.
All right, moving on, we have winter repeat upgrade.
So, in your packet, we, just to screen over, and I got with Mr. Tony Ben, who will be out this year for you, for the, the day on Saturday, January 29th. And you'll notice there's a flip. We really didn't take anything off the agenda. But at his recommendation, he thought it was better to start the morning with going over the role of the school committee. And he's got some materials, actually, we're gonna get homework in advance of this workshop so that we can kind of come in already with some background that he'll discuss. So, he thought it was better for us to start off with what our role is and how we can be as effective as possible and then dive into some of the key issues. So, we're gonna have that to start off with, with the roles that we will be at all, the student dining center. Some shout-out suggestions, can we do it while we eat? And that's what he agreed to, thought that would be good. And then we'll have a break and go into social, emotional learning and supporting all students and take a good chunk of time there. Have lunch and then break out into college and career readiness. And then follow up with, so the next steps, we kind of put at the end so that we have enough time with each of those sections. And then we root and say, okay, what did we talk about? What are our next steps? What is the role specifically of the school committee? But we're, we're, I'm sure, we do this every year and we run out of time, starting discussions. But I'm hoping that we can get in as much as possible and maybe set aside, you know, opportunities for future discussion. So, does anybody have any comments on that? Because this is change, it's still a marked draft. It wasn't, change is a result of the conversation that's just been had. Does it sound okay to my, yes? Thank you.
I, I just want to say that I think one of the things that's really important is the role of student committee. And having good takeaway notes for that because we are evolving and there's gonna be a lot of new members coming on. Unfortunately, they're not coming on, so it's okay. But, but in both districts, there are, you know, run-of-the-opings and having some kind of a formalized way of identifying the role of the student in a way that we have a lot of people in the world.
way of identifying the role of the committee in a way that we have time to work on, whether it be some kind of a fine or something, if you can say, oh, here's your role, and you go that, information purpose. I think a lot of times you get on the meeting, you kind of find in your way, which is the first year of kind of the way around.
Well, this will be the second time that Mr. Mann comes. Maybe you can probably do a refresher when you have new members. He's really effective. And I think that, I'm glad he suggested that, because I think it is important. We don't really do onboarding that much. I know that there are, the school committee has it, the Massachusetts Association has included it, but I think it's really important, I hear you, that we do something that kind of gets people feeling welcome and ready to start.
Well, you know, there is, there is provision that there's supposed to be an articulation for new school committee members, so if there is a significant change in makeup, we might think about having something more formal this year than we have in the past.
So we'll be setting up a homework and a daily seminar. And we will be this, I'm wanting more of that.
That's all, please.
I heard that. I don't know if the mic picked it up, I heard it.
He does have the recipe, yeah.
Oh, I thought you did.
All right, next up, we have policies. Yeah, so we have on the agenda tonight, several policies for second meeting. We discussed these at our last meeting. I have copies available here in front of me if anyone has any further questions regarding student complaints, the fundraising, administration of medicines to students, fees, fines and charges, non-social parents' rights, public complaints and domestic violence, leave policy. Not move acceptance of those policy changes on second meeting.
Second.
Okay, we're motioning for a second to accept the policies for second meeting. Any further discussion? Are you none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. The second matter we have involves five policies that the Massachusetts Association School Committee recommended that we remove from our policy manual. They are supplementary materials section and adoption, special interest material selection and adoption, student records, public complaints about school personnel, and public complaints about the curriculum or instructional materials. The committee considered the removal of these policies several months ago when Ms. McDonald was a member of the policy subcommittee and voted unanimously to recommend a removal of these policies from the policy manual, but for some reason they didn't get forwarded to the full committee. And inasmuch as Mr. Gore had taken Ms. McDonald's place, we thought that the committee should reconsider them, so at our last meeting, Mr. Gore had an opportunity to review these policies and raise any concerns that he might have had, and I don't believe he had any, so we voted, Mrs. Benson was unable to, he had that meeting, but she had participated in previous discussion on these policies, and once again, we voted, both Gore and I voted to recommend following these policies for consideration for removal. And the reason is, generally speaking, and again, each of the policies was in the material for this meeting, is because the issues that are raised in these are either just a verbatim recitation of Massachusetts regulations, which are readily available and can be changed at any time by the administrative agency that issued the regulations. So it just makes more sense to refer to regulations because they are subject to change. And then in other cases, the policies really are included or covered by other policies which have already existed and are included in the manual. So to be happy to address any specific questions, if there are. See no questions? If there are no questions, I would move that we adopt the previous recommendation to remove supplementary materials section and adoption, special interest materials section and adoption, student records, public complaints about school personnel, and public complaints about curriculum or instructional materials from our policy manual.
Second.
Second, further discussion? Are you none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Other matters, informational, test and stay update? We'll push that through our next meeting. It's interesting, and from all that we heard, the test and stay program was working well, but now it's superseded by the commissioner's office in a, I don't know if everybody saw the email that went out today from, from the superintendent, but with a new, new guidelines for testing. This test and stay program is still an option, but there's another, another protocol that's being proposed, and it's going to, it's going to actually reduce the level of testing by passing out test kits, which students can take home and do self-testing. And if they're, if they're negative, then they come to school, and if they're positive, then the parent is supposed to report the positive test, and then obviously the student stays out of school. So I'm sure everyone will take that, take that with that.
Since I haven't seen it yet, I, I'm not going to defer my question until I see it. So if a student takes the test at home and he or she is negative, she would come to school and report that he or she was negative, how do we verify that?
We don't.
I, I, I find that to be ludicrous. I, I, I don't know if I could possibly support that. I think commissioners going down a path that is basically, I don't know, I almost want to verify that the student is negative, or even our staff members, or whoever's walking in this building, by someone that's been administered by us, not, because I'm hearing horrible, horrible stories about people taking the test at home, not reporting it, and the next thing you know, they're, they're asking people for a letter saying that I had COVID exema weeks ago, and now I'm flying out of the country, and it's my still show when I try to get back. You know, I just, I have some major issues with that, so.
Well, I'm not, I'm not defending the commissioner, I'm not an authority on it, but the premise on which this is being done is that the frequency of COVID being passed from student to student, of student to staff, through close contact, is significantly lower than the COVID rate in the general population. So the premise is that COVID is not being passed from student to student, or from student to, or staff member, except at extremely low rate. I, I did print off the material, but it's something like one and a half or two percent transmission as opposed to 20% transmission in the general population. And so the premise is that the problem is not within the schools in terms of transmission. And so providing the self-tests to families at home is a better way to screen. Obviously, if the student is symptomatic, then they will be tested and they will be quarantined. So anyway, I, I just encourage you to read, read the full description of the protocol because it's optional, a school district can opt to adopt that or can retain the test and stay.
Which also means that the contact tracing must continue. If you, again, it's also based on what I read, so I'm only going, it's very limited amount of information, but it seemed like if you opted, if, my understanding is if you opt into this, then you no longer have test and stay, you no longer have contact tracing. Or if you remain with test and stay and contact tracing, which is a huge amount of time and a huge amount of work, and then you, then you would go, it's, yeah, but there's no way, as you said, it didn't seem as if there was any other verification, but you have to choose one or the other, and it's an opt, opt for. So I have not had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Schoenover about it, it didn't come out today, so I'm sure we have time.
I'm regionalizationist, study presentation, do you have any?
No, I just wanted to remind everybody that the meeting posting is going out this week. We're going to have an in-person meeting on the 25th. The, the presentation will most likely be in a distance learning center, so they will be presenting remotely in different parks of the state. And they were more comfortable with the idea of doing it remotely, but we will have access to ask any questions, so it's scheduled for the 25th as well.
Matt, can I just ask you a question, since they will be participating remotely? Are we all of them are off doing it remotely and then this way, then the public can be invited? Because obviously, more people attend our meetings when it was Zoom. I'm just thinking it out loud.
We debated that, and we thought that we might use it for a brief, for a meeting if, if something came up to fall off. So we kept it right now for us meeting in person, and then go back. Now, one of the things we talked about is, we're, there will be the presentation, which will be about an hour, about an hour or so, so we expect it to go an hour and a half with questions and answers. So there'll be an opportunity to give our question, please. There will be, once the presentation happens, the, I think you said it was about the 9:00 or 4:00, we'll be on a website so that people can access it. And to the point maker, suggest we're to go through this, that we have the ability to get public questions, like your email or whatever, that will be deposited in the box regarding the, the, so just like when we were doing the building project, I don't know if you remember, we would have our PowerPoint presentations up, and people could make comments, and then we'd plug it and do it the next week. We're going to look, we still have that to do the same in the presentation.
I'm just sorry, will public have the opportunity to participate only in person or remotely in?
We, at this point, we were going to have it in person, in the distance learning center. It will be taped. And the reason is because we were going to have our meeting in person. So we've never had a meeting where we do both in person and remote, so, right, so we thought that our meeting would be in person, and, and they would be live streaming because they would not to function.
So are, are we meeting, are we actually having meetings? We talked about not.
For the get backs?
Separate from the regionalization. I guess I just feel like six o'clock, we feel a lot of meetings, and I feel like two communities with a distance and a drive, I kind of, and there's, COVID numbers are still high. I feel like if, if having it is only for us having a meeting and not having, I would actually be inclined to make it a fully remote meeting, especially if the presenters aren't here, and people feel like you can record it, people could, you might get better participation. That's just a suggestion, but I'm not going here either, but I feel like some of my folks from Berkeley might be more inclined to dial in and drive down here. And yeah, particularly if it's not an in-person presentation anyway.
And we've found that, I mean, we debated it back and forth, I think we had two points today, but sometimes it's hard for us to say, we're not going to meet in person, and students are coming to the school on an hourly basis here and that, so that's why, but we can look at, I don't know.
I, I just, I just, the reason why I asked the question is because, look, let's just look today. When we were having meetings on Zoom, we would have a lot more people. I believe meeting each other in person has a major value, because you get, you know, especially after meetings, talk to the superintendent, or whatever the case may be, I do believe there's a value of meeting in person. But when the presenters are going to be on a screen, I almost don't want to come in now. Because why am I going to come in? Because I'm just going to be looking at a screen, and if I can look at a screen, I might as well just look at it at home. So, you know, it would be just like Mr. Talbot would be presenting to us on a screen today. You know, there's a value of them being, but if they're not going to show up, I would just urge us to have it on a Zoom meeting, and anyone else who wants to attend, because honestly, if the people are not willing to come in because of COVID reasons, or whatever the case may be, all right, we've had this on the calendar for many, you know, we can socially distance ourselves quite nicely in the, in any room in this building, but if they don't, if they don't feel comfortable coming in, I would say, let's just do it in Zoom. That's just my call, I'm going to let the, the chair decide, but.
For me, it's not such a COVID issue, so participate, I just say that thing right now, participation from the public, it will not, it's dinner time, it's getting home from work, it's crowded, it's all those reasons. And I feel like, this is my side, and I have better participation in the public. And I think this is an issue that we, you know, we know it's a, an issue of concern to both communities, so I just feel like to make it as available, and maybe I'm not, I feel like Zoom is more available to more people. I'm finding that, especially if we don't have.
Yeah, part of the discussion was thinking if they might be having a meeting for.
If there is, that's, that's a different calculation, but if there isn't. Yeah, okay. So we will be advised of that, maybe we, oh, I'll have to, 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 before we post it.
All right, is there a page for Kate, please, Ms. Benson?
Sure, so a lot of things coming in Berkeley. One of them is, we've stopped, as many of you know, we've been live streaming for students that have been close contacts, are going to be at home, it's been going great. We've stopped that as of this week due to the common numbers of students out over the last, since the Christmas break. So we're hoping to start that back up again in February, but it has become very challenging because we've had that a lot, students out, that much, well.
What was it that you had?
Live streaming, so we, if a student was out, they were live streaming from the classroom. It was, it was great. So we've paused that for the next month and see where we are in February, the numbers have been on the rise. We had to reschedule our drama show, we were supposed to be in the end of January, but we're rescheduling to March, just because of the high numbers of students out when we came into practice. So, and again, these are just students out, close contacts, we have a very young, you know, age group, so the action rate is not, you know, as high as it would be here at the school. We also have a, we were talking about busing earlier, so I wanted to share that, well, I'm not going out to bid this year because there is, there are challenges. So we're going, we've gone out to bid, nobody bid except for our current contractor, our current vendor, and it's bought up more than $75,000. And so for a very small district, that is a big chunk of money for us, but we have a lot of options, and it's really due to the not being available, like other companies just don't have the capacity right now to, to serve. So I wanted to share that with you, that our contract is up this year. And then our budget meeting is on the 24th, that's when we'll vote on our budget moving forward. Any questions?
It's been, it's been an issue that's somewhat controversial about busing contracts, because it's very common that there are no, no bids coming in other than the existing contractor, the factory, the general, or I guess the order general issues, Massachusetts issued a report on these issues, and there are some, some questions about, you know, potential collusion in the bidding process, so it's, it's not something that's been solved, but it's not, not at all unusual to, to start the response from the public.
I have, well, I'm happy that the drama show is going to be postponed to March, because I had no idea it was going to be postponed. So when you do find out the date, can you please let me know?
Sure, we'd be happy to.
I always make a point to attend. And then the other thing, what is the show?
Oh, it's Frozen.
Oh, excellent.
So, yeah, it's Frozen. I really love it, because it's dark. But yeah, it'll be.
Do you want to build a snowman? Is that, how many times have you heard that song?
Well, I have that number.
Let us know when the tickets are available.
I will be sure to send out a email, thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a new student representative, K38, Alice Souza, she did an excellent job the other day before the work in the park. My other update was, we've had our district meeting, and we had a very good discussion if there's a lot of work to do as far as administration and if we can make different options.
if there's a lot of work to do as far as administration and different, different options. I, I did want to take this moment to, since Mr. Austin drew an article the other day, I had quite a few people reach out to me, um, and I know a lot of the parents knew me last time when I was on redistricting, and that's when I decided I wanted to run the school committee, and I had some pretty strong opinions. Uh, I'm pretty open to everything. I'm more than willing to listen to any opinions and any information. I have no opinion at the moment on it. I need to see more information, see where I stand on this. I'm looking forward to hear. I know Mr. Schoenover wants to present a couple different models, and I really need to take a closer look at it to see what I think is best for our students in the district, and we're going to go from there, but it's, um, this is a big process, it's something that's going to happen overnight, and, you know, I look forward to hearing a little bit more about it. Rick, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'm just going to mention a couple things. We also have scheduled our, uh, budget, sub, uh, budget workshops, uh, for the K8 level. And the other major option, or pretty much the biggest thing that's probably happened since the building of this school, uh, we formed a subcommittee, um, uh, to serve on the, uh, vetting process of the general contractor. So we're at that point now, uh, so hopefully, uh, all the bids will be stopped coming in. I mean, all the, uh, interest bodies that will be coming in, and they're going to be vetting through all of those. It's an open meeting, obviously, and, uh, hopefully it will come to us to make a final decision and move forward from there, having those interviews.
Your, uh, project manager, architect, if they could carry it?
They are.
Okay. Next up, we have topics not anticipated by the chair, uh, Urban. Action items for future review.
Well, um, so, I want to have an update on the subcommittee evaluation process and at least the process of the subcommittee. And, uh, as well, we would have an update on the budget process.
There was something in the minutes that I would like to have clarified and drafted our next meeting, uh, under the student representative report. It says that one of the things that our student representative, uh, suggested was a bathroom monitor for prevention of vaping in bathrooms, and, um, at a budget committee meeting, the superintendent indicated that when the students heard, uh, that you were proposing a budget item for those persons, uh, they walked and said, why would you spend that money on those positions? So I'd like to get clarification of, of that situation.
So I, I was at this, and I were an amazing student, so I had a lot of input. So, yeah, they were very pragmatic. They, they identified the issue. They, you know, just told me that monitors might be helpful, but when the equipment said, well, this is how much they cost, they actually said, it's not worth us putting that much money into it. So I don't know if it changed, I mean, with...
Well, that's, that's consistent with what the superintendent said. It's not consistent with the, with the minutes, um, but I would like to, then I would like to know what the students propose, because I, I have to say, I was disappointed to hear that we're still experiencing those problems, because we knew about them a few years ago, and I would have hoped that in some way they would address, if matter could be, specifically discuss the possibility of putting in monitoring devices in all of the bathrooms to sense what was going on, but again, in speaking with the superintendent, I was told that those monitors are not really very effective. So I don't know what the solution is, but I think that it's, 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 it's an issue that we really ought to try to address in some way, whether it's our role, but I, it's unfortunate that these issues are going on, and we have, um, had to wait a bit. The second thing I wanted to mention is I'd like to correct quick, um, um, the, uh, perhaps executive session, building security.
We got in the minutes, um, that those were our words, so technically those are correct, uh, what happened, fact, you know, that's obviously a follow-up, maybe they can come back and, you know, as you mentioned, um, but I would also like to address that issue sooner than later at our meetings, because, um, maybe it's something that we need to have, um, more, you know, having our SRO attempt, go through these restrooms or whatever the case may be, I don't know how we would do with the, like, the girls' room or the ladies' room, but, and if there's an issue at a certain time, but we really do need to address this issue sooner than later.
One of the ideas that, and I can't, I would not know if some, some, I was at the senior advisory, there was a lot of discussion about that. One of the ideas that they threw up was the potential of investing in maybe one or two monitors, or they practically said, we, we, um, have armed faculty, do you go around area of, we talked about how that literally part of the movies and no one in there, but so, I think that they're interested in trying to come up with a solution. They, they were very inconsistent in saying, well, if, if you make it so that these are the only two bathrooms you're going to, um, oversee or check on, then everyone knows not to go to those. So it has to be always have a random walking around, you don't know what's going to happen. I'm just telling you what they talked about.
I'd be interested in hearing if other school districts have come up with any, any successful solutions. It may not, maybe that it's a version of a problem to address.
It happens every day. And typically, even when you have a sensor, it senses it, it's not, it doesn't, you still need a person to respond to it. Um, you know, my daughter is a sophomore in high school in a different district, and, um, you know, it's similar to the, I mean, you listen to the kids talk, they know which bathroom to go to and which one not to go to. Um, and, uh, they do, at her school district, they, they have people, and it's exactly what you said, it's a little bit of that random checking, and, you know, it, it cuts down, it still does not eliminate it, um, you know, their, their hall monitor, um, she walks miles a day, literally. So, um, and, and they have, they've had them for years, um, even when I was teaching there. Um, I think that it's a deterrent, um, it, it is just not eliminate the, the problem overall. Um, and again, as, as, as guys already just mentioned, um, they have the capacity to lock bathrooms, um, at, at that school in addition, and so there are certain bathrooms that are, that are open, so it's easier to monitor them, um, you know, on each floor typically, um, but it is a problem everywhere.
And it's, and speaking to students, I'm sorry, and speaking to students, uh, from my child to her friends to just random kids, uh, that I see every once in a while, some of them feel very uncomfortable using the restrooms. So we really need to address that issue. You know, to, my point is, you know, all the students that are very uncomfortable using the restrooms, at least if you had a monitor, at least they know that's the restroom to go to, and you won't feel uncomfortable anymore, but it doesn't, the solution is, I mean, the solution to the problem is really, really looking into it, investing some serious time, and that's why I think let the students come up with these ideas, uh, and then see if it, because I think they're going to find, because they're in there, they're in there every single day, so, um, sorry to cut you off.
No, I was just going to say, I think that is an important discussion, but it's actually not on our agenda if you don't have a superintendent, you don't have the principal, so I think we should probably stop talking about it, and, um, and...
We're only talking about...
Talking about... Yeah, I, 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 I think a lot of them, sorry, I just don't think we have all the players here, and, and it's not on the agenda, so it, and it's, it's an important topic, I just think we should move along to, um, discuss it, it's not on the agenda for our next meeting.
Thank you. All right. Any other action items for future meetings? So next up, we have, here is approval of minutes for prior meetings. We had three sets of minutes in our packet. One of them is for joint open session minutes in the third year, 2021. Second, joint executive session minutes of this board, uh, oh, no, sorry, joint executive session minutes of the, the, the open session is for the region of Somerset. In my understanding, like the joint minutes have already been voted by the, you know... So, um, are there any notes or changes to these minutes? Would this one, if you were setting? Yes, but I agree with Mr. Shaw, there's nothing to change here, I'm just looking for clarification on the issues. So unless there are any changes in these minutes, then it's a motion to accept these three sets of minutes as a, um...
Subtle.
Second.
Motion is second, accept the minutes as, as distributed, any discussion? Yeah, I, I would just say, I'll vote to approve these, uh, joint meeting minutes, but I think it's more appropriate to approve joint meeting minutes instead of joint meeting. If anyone has an issue, apparently there was no issue with the K8, there's no issue here, but if there were an issue with the minutes, it really ought to be a joint meeting for the panel to discuss it and clarify it after COVID, so, is it a future?
The only, just to stay with that, uh, topic, the only problem with that, I think we are, we are required to approve minutes by a certain period of time, so I don't know if, if we would have, if we'd be able to approve it, considering we're not meeting in person as a joint, does that consider as the first meeting or every single meeting that we do meet? Because I believe there is a statute of when you are able to approve meetings, so we would have to look into that as well.
I think it's only that if you, that they be approved in a reasonable period of time, and the goal should be the next meeting, but I'm, I'm opposing that we would consider that the next joint meeting, you know, we'd have to accept it, we certainly would double-check it. I think it's a new open meeting or...
Any other motion? I'm ready.
Okay, good. I have...
I'm going to just stay on the open session, um, of Somerset, because I'm... I'll have to stay on the open session. I think it's nearly four years.
All right, any other quick comment?
I'm just going to mention something as a citizen of, of our town. We received some information regarding our committee of a member not, uh, you know, not running again. Obviously, as a, uh, school committee member, I'm heartbroken because I always loved our debates, um, but one of the things that I can honestly say, as a taxpayer and someone who served on these committees, we're losing one, if not the most dedicated school committee member we've ever, I ever worked with, you know, always prepared, coming to the meeting. Uh, I, you know, I, during the subcommittee appointments, I was quite sure that he was sending us all the signals that he was not going to run again, uh, but I think it's a huge loss for the districts of, of both Berkeley and Somerset, but I, I, I felt like I had to say something, and I'm sure I'll say something on his last meeting, but it's by far one of the biggest losses that has happened, so...
You're welcome. You can take your time.
All right, next up, the executive session, pursuit message, general laws, chapter 38, section 21, page 3, United Strategy Respective for Bargaining Litigation, Open Meeting and Have A Determinative Effect on Bargain Litigation Position in Public Party, the CHS declares how its realty, asbestos, contaminated materials solid, and solid waste to move in front of home unsupervised space. So, and we're not going to generate the session, so, any motion to adjourn public session?
Someone?
Motion is second. Here, Oliver, David, and... Zander?
Aye.
Ms. Binton?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.